Okay, folks. It's seven o'clock and it's Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019. We're in the council chambers in the city of Platteville, City Hall. And I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian? Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols? Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Uh, the first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. Just let me know if you want anything removed. We have the council minutes from October 1, the special meeting, October 8th, the regular meeting, and October 10th, a special meeting. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I'm appointing, uh, Joanne Wilson to the Board of Review and Tom Lindahl to the ET zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to sell alcohol are listed in the packet. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Please limit comments to more, no more than five minutes. I have one slip in front of me, and that is the UW Platteville report. Ben?
Ben Belkey, 800 South Chestnut Street. Um, so as you can see, there's now an agenda in front of you, so we're trying to get a little bit better at this, um, as the days go on. Um, so first thing I want to mention, we had homecoming, um, week, so I want to say thank you, um, on behalf of the students, um, to the rest of the community, say thank you because, um, it was really great. Um, we've gotten a lot of alumni coming back to us and mentioning how great it was. Some are saying that was the best homecoming so far. Um, so I want to say thank you for letting us, um, for letting us do some of these things in the community. Um, also, I know the lighting of an M, lighting of the M was a really big, um, event, um, and the firework display was really wonderful. Um, so I just want to say thank you for the hospitality, thank you for joining in some of the events. It was a really great time. Um, so yeah, thank you. Um, also, Greek Life, um, so some things that Greek Life is doing, on October 28th, which is coming up, um, from four to nine PM, all, and all Greek programming, this is kind of like the fun for Greek, for Greek Life, um, they're hosting an event, um, at the Country Kitchen, and fifteen percent of the profits of that will go to the all-Greek programming, programming, with the effort of making a, an all-campus Greek festival. So if you're at all hungry from four to nine PM, I'd recommend making a stop down to Country Kitchen, um, and those profits will be shared, um, to all-Greek programming. Um, November 15th also, I mentioned this last time, but from 12 to 5 PM, um, at the Mining Museum, uh, all the Greek chapters will be volunteering at the Mining Museum, so I think that's really awesome. Um, Greek Life likes to do things together, but it's really neat when you get all the chapters together, do one great thing like this, and they will be at the Mining Museum then. Um, just some general dates at the university. You have the World, World of Leadership Conference, November 21st, uh, Matt, Matt Castleit, he's the keynote speaker. He was, he was an older student body president. He now works for Google, um, so that's, that's going to be a really cool program as well. Also, November 19th, from two to four PM in the Marquee, Women in Government. Barb Dos and Eileen Nichols will be there, talking about, uh, women in government, so, um, everybody from the community is welcome to join in those as well. Um, I know a lot of our senators will be going to that, um, too. Also, Rocky Horror Show, um, I'm a big fan of musicals, um, so I'm really excited about this one. It opens October 12th and runs through November 2nd. Um, this is a really big one. Um, they've actually extended the amount of time that they're running the show, since it's such a big picture. Um, as you can see, you can see the tickets, um, twelve dollars for adults, five dollar, five dollars for, under eighteen, and ten dollars for seniors. Um, it shows every night, seven, uh, seven-thirty PM, um, and there's a midnight showing as well, uh, which I think is really neat for Ho, for Halloween. Um, also, Spring Blooms, um, so Amy Seebuth, Seebuth Wilson, who is our Sustainability Director, or Sustainability Coordinator on campus, um, she kind of put this together, which I thought was really awesome. Um, if you know where the Marquee, uh, Marquee Roundabout is, down by Roundtree, on the south side of that, they're planning on planting over three thousand buds on that, um, that will bloom to be orange and blue. Um, so that's going to be early November, we're planting those, but I think that'll be a really cool sight to see once that, um, does bloom in spring, so keep an eye out for that. Renewable energy, um, so our campus is also, if you've been hearing anything about that, our campus has been exploring some ideas around renewable energy. Um, there's ideas to, to put, um, a couple acres of solar panels, um, on campus, on the west side of campus, as well as there's some discussions about having a, a wind turbine out on the farm as well, um, and those discussions keep moving forward. Um, it's very preliminary, but, um, those are some discussions that are happening. And, um, related to that, in the sustainability field, we were really excited to find out that, um, it was just today, just announced today in the Princeton Review's, um, 2019 rankings, that they ranked UW Platteville in that for, um, leaders in sustainability. Um, it was really cool to see that, um, and it just highlights all the cool things we have going on campus when it deals with sustainability. The other sheets that I have with you, that I handed to you, is about Sane. Um, so, um, the Senate is planning a visit to go to the Sane, um, uh, the Sane Program at Southwest Health. Um, that visit is going to be next Tuesday, um, from 1:50 PM to 3:15 PM. Um, it's going to be really interesting to see, um, it's, for some context on it, it's about sexual assault, um, nurse examiner, free examinations for STIs, um, free examination if you, if you did deal with a sexual assault, um, they're also trained professionals dealing with trauma care, um, so it's really cool, and I'm more than happy to extend an invitation to come with us as well. Um, I know that, I know this is really quick turnaround, um, but I just thought I would offer it that if you guys wanted to come with, that's the times that we're going to that, um, and I know everybody there would be more than happy to have as many people from the community go to that. Um, it's a really cool resource that we have, that a lot of people don't know that we have, um, so we wanted to make sure that when we extended the offer to you, and as well as Senate, we were able to go there and see what they have to offer. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other, uh, information under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, I would just point out that everybody has on their desk tonight a, um, a copy of a letter from ATC. You may have already gotten that in your mail. I had, and I suspect that others had. There's also, uh, a letter from, uh, co-authored by Howard and Dan, uh, relative to, uh, projects that will be for next year and notifying people, and, uh, and we'll get to the last thing, uh, in our information and discussion. So, we'll move on to reports. Uh, Boards, Commissions, Committee Meetings, uh, Platteville Public Transportation Committee, Isaac?
Nothing to add.
Library Board, Robin?
Nothing to add.
Airport Commission, I have nothing to add. Water and Sewer Commission, Nichols, Killian, Andor, Shanley?
No addition on my part.
All right. And let's move on to the action item tonight, which is a resolution to extend TID-4 to support affordable housing. Joe?
This, uh, this resolution would be, uh, taking advantage of a provision in state law that allows, uh, tax increment finance districts that would normally be ready to close, to be kept open for one additional year, uh, with the idea that the, the fi, the funds that are generated from that one year of increment can be used to support programs that will help create or provide affordable housing in the community. So the, through a previous work session, the council had talked about this and decided that they would like to use this, obviously, as a, a means of starting to implement some of the recommendations, um, from the housing study that was completed, um, earlier this year. Um, so the, the main target of these funds will be to provide incentives, uh, in the form of loans to homebuyers who purchased pre-1950s affordable houses, which are in need of rehabilitation, and grants for conversion of pre-1950s single-family rentals back to owner-occupied affordable homes. So the details of exactly how those programs are going to work will be, uh, yet to come, but this is kind of the first step to pass this resolution, which allows that district to be maintained open for another year. Any questions?
Questions? The state has to approve it before we would.
So this has to be submitted by November?
Submitted, do they then?
There's not really an approval process. The council approves this, and then it gets submitted to the state, um...
So when we submit it, we assume that it's?
Yes.
Fine. Oh, okay. Never know. Just wanted to know if they closed the loop, or we just?
It's a little unusual in that way. Usually, there's a submission that requires some kind of approval process, but in this case, there's not.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to comment that after we discussed this last time, it might have been actually the morning of October 8th, as I think about the dates, on NPR, there was a program, and it was, uh, University of Wisconsin, I don't know, professor speaking exactly to this point, recommending that communities should be doing this, so that that was an?
I did see also somewhere in a bulletin that there was a presentation made to the State Senate, or, uh, one of the groups about the, the issues with workforce housing and the need for more affordable housing in the state, so I'm hoping that's going to result in some additional funding programs that we can maybe tap into after this increment is, is used up.
Other questions? Do I hear?
I would move to approve Resolation, Resolution 1917 to extend the life of TID-4 for one year to support affordable housing projects in the form of, so homebuyers who purchased pre-1950s affordable houses, which are in need of rehabilitation, and grants for conversion of pre-1950s single-family college-type rentals back to affordable owner-occupied homes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1917. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, that's the last action item on our agenda. We'll move to the information items then, and the first of those is, uh, planning for our, uh, work session on the ATV/UTV ordinance, and we have scheduled that work session for our next meeting, which is November 12th. And so, in order that we have information that council members want, I'm going to ask, if you have information that you are requesting, that you tell us now, so that we can see that it is assembled. I'll start by saying that I have reached out to the hospital, to the school district, and to the university, just noting that, uh, this ordinance will be in discussion, and if they have anything they want to share, they should share that. Uh, I noted that, uh, the, that while there are no routes that are currently proposed, that there is a proposal to extend the hours and then to extend it to year-round, or to set hours and extend it to year-round. So I did note that in my communication with them. So, and tonight on your desk, you should all have had a copy of the current ordinance, so that, I know some people were not on the council when this was adopted, so this will give you that ordinance. So, you know, I think what I'm just going to do is start right down and say, uh, Barb, do you have information that you would like for the work session in particular that you haven't seen?
I don't know what line, but I would prefer that we consider all streets having it open. I've only seen three ATVs in town, and to me, that's not all day, all day, all times.
Okay. So... All right, so you would like, okay. Jason, what kind of information are you looking for?
Um, in terms of kind of the revenue generating, um, aspect of it, I'm wondering how much revenue has come in, how much of that is new revenue versus just, you know, more local people coming in, using their ATVs as a, um, alternative way to, to get to the businesses?
Um... So, do, may I reinterpret that as meaning?
Yeah.
You're wondering how many tourism or out-of-town people have been spending in local businesses?
That's part of it, like, how many, how many unique users from out of the area have come in since this has been enacted? How much actual revenue has been generated versus just moving it around type of thing with, um, again, how much of it is just local people wanting to use their ATVs as a different mode of transportation to get to the businesses? What businesses are feeling left out in terms of not being on the route? Let's see. What businesses have been spoken to in terms of kind of what feedback has been given? Um, and has there been any discussion or anything, any consideration in terms of the, um, reclassification of them to be, go from recreational vehicle, which they're governed and they follow the, um, laws and things like that, the DNR, to being held to the same, um, standards as every other vehicle on the road? And, um... I think that's it for right now, so...
Okay, so what I heard were, are, have there been any law changes?
Or any, or just any discussion or any movement towards that? Because I guess that piece of it, I get hung up on because, um, if, especially if the end goal is to want to have all streets open, have these as a, another mode of transportation, I feel strongly that they should be held to the same regulations as every other vehicle on the road, in terms of laws, so, you know, especially with like speeding and violations, um, every other vehicle. I myself have a motorcycle license, I've ridden motorcycles, so I have to, you know, all of that goes against my license if I get a speeding ticket, you know, if there would be an OWI, I would face the same penalties as every other vehicle on the road. I guess that's my biggest thing, where I get hung up on this, in terms of expanding it and having it more than just what it is right now.
Okay, so one, so I'm going to try and condense that. It appears that we need any information about any new laws, any, or any proposed new laws, uh, relative to that, and if there's any movement at all in terms of, uh, DNR, DOT, and the regulation lineup, I guess, I don't know. Other than that, I, I would assume that we might want to contact, um, the Chamber and the Main Street Program with Jason's other questions. Would seem that they would have, um, access to the, to that, uh, to a database, that they could pose those questions. So Jason, if you would write those questions that you had in an email and see that Nicola gets them, so that she can forward them on?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, Robin?
Um, I would speak to those same points mentioned by both of them. Um, I guess mostly just wondering what the ATV clubs are thinking at this point, um, just wanting to know what, what they're hoping for, and if there's ability to move towards that or not, and then, um, wondering from the Police Department, Main Street, just feedback in general from the community, if there's any issues that have come up. Um, I've probably seen, not a lot at all, the ATV/UTVs on the streets, but I've probably seen about an even number on legal streets as illegal streets, so, um, I don't know if it's a matter of opening them up, so that we don't have to try to police a problem that's very difficult to police, or, um, enforcing that. But, but, they're just, I, little things, I think people, you know, live three do, three doors down from the main road, so they're just cut, making their way to the roads where they can drive, um, just seen some of that, so, just wondering what the community feedback is at this point.
All right, so Doug will be looking to you for a recap of the year in terms of, uh, what, what you've seen in incidents, and what was the other one?
Main Street.
Oh, yeah, we'll get...
Any feedback from businesses or?
Well, that was, okay. Ken?
Uh, this is mainly, I think, for the Chief of Police. Uh, these are things I wrote down, uh, prior to this meeting, and, um, what I want is information about ATVs and UTVs separately. I want them compared to, uh, standard vehicles, in other words, uh, pickups and, uh, the sedans and so forth.
Just a minute. So you're saying you want?
I want information on?
About an ATV, but you want then different information, the same information about UTVs? I think he wants to know what the differences are?
No, I want to know the differences between, between ATVs and standard vehicles, UTVs and standard vehicles. Please, I'll go through my, my list.
Okay.
Number one, uh, directional lights. Um, the Chief can look this up, they both have to have directional lights. Uh, two, taillights, running lights. Four, stoplights. Uh, three, three is stoplights. Four, headlights. Uh, is it to be one or two per vehicle? I saw one place said they only had to have one per vehicle. Uh, number five, doors. I was about, two months ago, out in the country, and this fellow went by with a vehicle, and he had his hand up on the roof, and there was no door, so which vehicles are allowed to be like that? Uh, number six, seat belts, um, front and rear. Number seven, airbags, front bags, side bags. Number eight, is a general, uh, comment or asking for information, any other safety features common to standard vehicles, which make it safer for other vehicles if ATV/UTV vehicles have these? So anything that, uh, the standard vehicles have that would be helpful to keep the, uh, ATV/UTV vehicles safer for the other people. So what I'm looking at here is, um, making ATVs, UTVs standard with the rest of vehicles, uh, that are on the road. And then, uh, my last one is a general thing. Uh, in a Telegraph Herald, I saw a number of articles about, um, uh, I believe it was counties and st, joining states, discussing about ordinances for ATVs, UTVs in their locations. So any information on these, as to what they have come up with? So these are my items that I'm asking for, and if the Chief doesn't get them all, then I'll copy this off and give it to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Uh, Eileen?
Uh, I would echo the, uh, request for the, um, any comments or concerns that the citizens of Platteville have made to the Police Department about ATV/UTV use on the current routes, and, um, the Main Street Program, not only the economic impact, but perhaps, um, just having, um, some visits with the people on Main Street who have been aware of the ATVs, UTVs, because that is our route, if, uh, any comments or concerns there. I know that a couple of cities, um, Lancaster and Cupid City, I think, have, Doug, you might know this, have, uh, ATV/UTV ordinances, and I guess if you could reach out to them just to see if they've had any concerns or comments, because I think that they have more streets, and maybe Lancaster allows on every street, so I'd just be curious to know how that's working, compared to the, um, routes that we have currently in the city, if they have any questions or concerns from their citizens.
Hey, Isaac, any information you want that we need to assemble?
Not information you want, but I'd like to share some information.
Well, we'll, we'll share it at the November 12th.
Oh, just one thing you missed, and kind of Barb has made a statement, so...
Oh.
The things that we are going to ask for, or the group is going to ask for, is to go year-round, to get rid of the winter parking rules, is to have a set time instead of the sunrise-to-sunset ordinance that's on there, and then also to propose opening up all the streets to the City of Platteville, with the exception of streets that are over thirty-five miles an hour not being included, so...
Okay, so that will be what will be discussed, and then we'll see where it goes from there. So, uh, I want to make the, uh, work session as productive as possible, therefore asking everybody, so if you think of something, I mean, it's a, a little while until the 12th, so we should have time to assemble information that people want, uh, or think they need as they make these decisions, and talk about it, so if you think of other things, by all means, uh, send them off to Nicola.
State, one simple one?
Barb? One simple one. Robin first. Robin, one simple one.
Well, I'm just wondering the surrounding township, their preferences as far as regarding opening all streets?
Township of?
Platteville.
Platteville.
Do we have anything else that touches up against this?
No.
This is a silly question.
No, we're in the middle of the town of Platteville, I think.
We're all open.
So I can, I can reach out to the town of Platteville, too.
I'd like a email sent, based on everything that was just said.
An email of everything that we're going to gather?
Right.
We'll try to do that.
I can help to gather, okay?
Okay, we'll try to do that.
And we'll get that before the meeting?
That's the, that's the point. Let's have it before the meeting, so that when we have the meeting, we can have a productive discussion, instead of having people say, "Well, I wish I knew," or "I have this question." So there's plenty of time between now and the 12th of, well, let's say, a week before, because we send out the agenda materials. So let's see if you can, uh, if anybody has anything that they think about, that they've heard about, that they have a question about, let us know that, so we can get answers before, or assemble information, I guess, prior to the 12th. Okay?
And feel free to email me and ask me, because, as you know, I'll have every bit of information or facts you want on these, so I have them with me tonight, so...
Well, let's, let's put it in one place, so that everybody has access to the same thing, so... All right? Uh, let's see then, the next thing on our agenda tonight, for done, does anybody have any more, uh, information for planning for the November, number, November 12 work session? Okay, Contract 918, snow and ice removal, this is on for information tonight, not for action. So Howard?
Yes, uh, this is our annual contract for, uh, snow and ice removal on sidewalks. Um, we have a thirty-dollar admin fee per parcel that goes on top of the contracted charge. Um, we provided bid packages to two local firms, we received one bid, the bid tabulation is enclosed. Um, our procedure is that we have our code enforcement officer who documents and measures the snowfall, uh, and then, when we've reached, uh, the designated snowfall, um, the code enforcement officer goes out and, uh, checks for potential violations, places a door hanger, and documents the address, the list is provided to the contractor, the contractor goes to those documented locations. If the sidewalk has been cleared, there's no further action. If the sidewalk has not been cleared, uh, the contractor removes the snow and ice and the property owner's bill. Um, last year, former city manager Kurt requested staff hold a meeting with potential contractors. We did so, there was, uh, one person in attendance. Um, due to changes in the way that the city performs a service, basically because of the door hangers and things like that, uh, we were told that it can result in costs to the contractor that are not recovered. Basically, they go around and they inspect all these properties, and if there's just one or two properties that need to be shoveled, they've spent a half a day going around and they don't get, uh, you know, they wouldn't get any, uh, compensation. So as a result of that, we included in our bid, uh, what we call a call-out charge, so the contractor would get a base level of, of compensation, uh, for basically what I just said, going around and inspecting those properties. They would get the charge for, um, they would also get paid for, uh, any sidewalks that end up requiring to be shoveled. Uh, so for this, um, for this contract, the bid price is twenty-five cents a square foot, fifty dollars minimum for snow only, thirty cents per square foot, or sixty dollars per location for snow and ice, and the base call-out charge is six hundred dollars per call-out. Uh, we're recommending that, uh, when we look at our fee schedules for next year, 2020, that we look at, uh, possible fee increase to help compensate for the call-out charges. Uh, the, uh, recommendation would be to award to Four Seasons Landscaping at those bid prices.
So what I'm understanding you to say is, right now, we don't have a revenue source to cover a six hundred dollar call? to cover a six hundred dollar callout charge?
That's correct.
And did we propose the six hundred dollars or was the six hundred dollars, it appears that we proposed it? Did we?
Well.
Are we just?
We had, what happened was, we had the discussion and it was brought out that, that the contractor has this potential for incurring costs that won't be recovered.
Correct.
And so at that point, that's when together we thought that a callout charge would be a, would be an appropriate way of doing that. We did not specify the amount. We just thought that, that doing that as a base level of compensation for requiring the contractor to go out was, was a better way of making sure that, that the contractor is fairly compensated. It's, it's the contractor that determined what they felt the appropriate charge would be.
But like I said, at this point in time, we don't have a revenue source to cover a six hundred dollar callout charge.
That's correct.
Now, that was my question, how he came up with a six hundred dollar callout cost or fee. A callout, checking for places that may have snow and ice on their sidewalks. I'm wondering if this seems rather high for the amount for the callout. So I'd like to see more information on that. How many, how many people are going out as far as the contractor is concerned? How many individuals go with the contractor? Is one person going out, two, two going out? How many are being paid to go out and do the callout? So these are things I'd like to find out.
One thing I'd like to see happen this year in the contract is that when a person is given the notice to clear their sidewalks, that they just don't shovel a path right down the middle with a, you know, a twelve inch sidewalk and they think that's cleared. It used to be that it went from grass to grass and that's what your sidewalk was cleared for. And then, you know, all of a sudden we've been seeing these people, they just do a real quick path down the middle and I'm done. Well, I mean, that's not the way it's supposed to be. When your sidewalk is cleared, it is from grass to grass, no matter if you have a three foot wide sidewalk or a foot, excuse me, a four foot wide sidewalk, no matter whether you have a twenty foot yard or a long yard, or if you have a hundred some foot long yard. I mean, that's not the, that's the way the rules used to be and they kept changing and changing them and that's how they should go back to being is grass to grass. And understand there's going to be a couple of spots here where a little bit of snow gets packed down, but, you know, safety wise and for the people that are going out and doing these looking, see if they can clear it out. That's my opinion on how it should be done.
Edge to edge. I thought it was. Isn't that our rule?
Well, I seen a lot last year that got put by.
Howard?
The, the intent based on guidance that we received was that if there was, that if there was an attempt at clearing the sidewalk, that we would give it a pass for the, for the initial time.
I'd like to see that changed. I mean, anybody could do an attempt. To do your sidewalk correctly is, is grass to grass.
And I would agree with older person, Shanley, as well, especially with, when it comes to people with disabilities. I think the more you can have cleared out and, and a wide enough path, especially for people with wheelchairs and other accessibility, I think that's really important.
You got a gentleman that did it last year here, he could speak to this.
I, I, I agree, Isaac, I, that we should be cleaning from edge to edge, not from, because if we have a lot of snow in November and you have a little path and then you have a littler and a littler and a littler path, I mean.
That's what it looked like on some sidewalk.
So, I mean, I think that.
Understood.
I mean, I, I understand that there may be a flake of snow on the, I mean, that, that it's not going to be like Holland, Michigan where they have put underground heaters under the sidewalks and they melt off. I understand that that's not the case, but it seems like more than a little path is what's needed.
Understood. Thank you.
And I do have concerns about the six hundred dollar callout charge when we have no revenue source to pay it. I, I would be interested in knowing how many times there were callouts last year that resulted in no cleanings or, I guess, or limited cleaning. Because six hundred dollars for a callout is equivalent to seventy-five dollars an hour for an eight hour day. Any other people who have any questions or additional needs for the snow and ice removal? Otherwise, we're going to move on to the Contract 2019 for fuel. Howard?
Thank you. Currently, we have a contract with Mulgrew Oil from Dubuque, Iowa through the end of this year. We are bidding contract for refueling the tanks at the street department garage and the wastewater plant. We have two tanks down there at the street department garage, one for diesel fuel and the other with unleaded gasoline with ethanol for city vehicles. We have a small truck mounted tank for gasoline with no ethanol for our small engines. Contract basically would be refill the tanks. There were three bidders for this contract. We reviewed everything. The lowest, the low bidder was Mulgrew Oil again at six and a half cents per gallon over, over wholesale price. In order to try to do a comparison, we also basically asked them to say, okay, if we got a hundred gallons of each product as of the wholesale price on, as of noon on October 16th, what would have, what would our price be? And so I had that spreadsheet as well. And Mulgrew came in lowest overall. So I feel comfortable that, that we're doing, we're doing the right thing here.
Well, as we got a bid from Allegiant Oil from Lancaster and they also have a spot in town here as well, that if the difference is point zero one five cents, then we're talking pretty small numbers, I'd like to see somebody that's a local in this area get the contract. We've got a store in town, Lancaster, we've got one in Rui, we've got another, I mean, they have four or five stores or shops and two counties around us.
Isaac, I, I understand your desire. I believe we, we may not have a choice.
This is a service contract and not a, and not a public works contract. Public works requires a low, the lowest responsible bidder. A service contract is what, can be given to the contractor deemed in the best interest of the city.
When did you say this was, service?
This is a service contract. I'm, you know, when I say public works contract, I'm talking like street construction or, or a building construction project for the city or something like that.
So this is the case where we could go with the lower, the non-lower one?
If the council deems that, that the, that this is in the best interest of the city, they can choose whichever one they wish. I'm, I'm presenting the lowest bidder.
And, and I guess I would look at the fuel comparison sheet. For a hundred gallons of each of those fuels, the difference is eleven thousand dollars. So the question would be, are we willing to pay eleven thousand dollars more every time we buy a hundred gallons?
I'm sorry, the, the spreadsheet also, the, the actual, the lower numbers, the two hundred dollar numbers, those are the, the one hundred gallons worth. What I did was I also extended based on the annual purchase of fuel. And so the larger number than eighty and ninety-one thousand.
And eighty-four from number one.
And eighty-four, those would have been, if, if the price stayed the same as of October 16th for a full year, that would be, had have been, that would have been the difference in price between the three vendors for our full years.
So this looks at the gallons and, and extending that price as it was on the 16th. I haven't, I do have a question. Who determines the wholesale price?
That's set by the market rate. What we're talking about is whatever terminal the fuel comes from. I've been, I've been told that the closest fuel terminals at the wholesale level are in Dubuque and McFarland.
So the, so everybody pays the same wholesale price?
Well, it depends on whether they get their fuel from the Dubuque terminal or the McFarland terminal. Those terminals set the wholesale price for, for their fuel. And then these people shop it, but our requirement is whichever terminal they get it from, they charge us the upcharge, six and a half, eight or thirteen cents on top of what that terminal's wholesale price is.
But if everybody bought, if everybody bought their fuel at the same terminal, it would be the same wholesale price?
Correct.
That's what I wanted.
I feel confused. When I look at the above wholesale price, point one-three or point oh-eight, New Horizon is the most expensive, but sheet there, the middle, what's, how, what's the difference?
I'm not sure what their, what their actual difference is because I've also been told that there's a, there's a wholesale price and then there's a wholesale price with discount and it's a lot more complex than.
Do you believe that Allegiant and Mulgrew, how do you say that, get from the same supplier where New Horizon?
I'm not sure which one they get them from, whether they get them from Dubuque or, well, I would have to look at the, at the reports that they gave me. I believe most, I believe they all said Dubuque, but I, I'd have to verify it.
I want to echo Isaac's comments about using a local supplier if possible. I'm curious if you think that the others might not offer bids next year if we did something like that? Would we? Process?
I suppose it's possible. My intent here was that we would have a two-year contract with whoever is awarded so that at the end of 2021, we would be doing a similar type of a process.
Howard, would you take a look at your 2019 fuel comparison sheet and just verify that prior to the next meeting, that those numbers are as they should be? As I see what Robin is saying, with New Horizons being point one-three versus point oh-eight and point oh-six-five, it seems like New Horizon should be where Allegiant is and Allegiant should be where New Horizons is, but I don't know. It's just, it just, and I can't see the formula, formula, but yeah, New Horizons had the biggest markup, but somehow they came out in the middle. Don't, yeah. Just take a look.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that'll be on for action next time and we'll move on that. As you think about that, think about if it is eleven thousand dollars more per year, where we'll get that. All right, 2019 City Goals Quarterly Report. Nicola?
So in the fall of 2016, the common council and city leadership embarked on a strategic planning process. This was for the period of 2017 to 2019. And each year, the resulting strategic plan has been used during the annual city and department goal setting process. The 2019 goals with progress as of September 30th are listed in your packet in the report. You can see there the, the process, or the progress for the first three quarters. If there's any questions about any of those projects or the, the progress so far, I'd be glad to try to answer those. Ken?
What's the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay, page three.
Sure.
Just a general question. Page three, it says down underneath connections, facilitate next strategic plan 2020 dash 2022. And then it says this will be delayed until 2021 until the new man, city manager is on board. So is that correct?
The process will be undertaken in 2020 and the period will be 21 through 23, I would imagine. So the strategic plan process will take place most likely in the second half of 2020.
So I think Ken is asking that then be updated so that it says this will be delayed until 2021, 2020.
Sure.
Facilitate next strategic plan. Is that what you're asking, Ken?
I'm asking why it's delayed until 2021 until the new city manager is on board. The city manager supposedly is coming relatively soon. 2020, the person is coming.
Yeah, it's, it's probably because over to the left, the facilitate next strategic plan 2020 to 2022, that the next strategic plan will now be 2021 to 2023. So I think that's where the confusion is. But we can certainly update that to 2020 in the right-hand column. Is there any other questions about any of the progress?
I, I do have a question and I know that work is progressing downstairs. I've been in and looked at some of the work that's going on and can you, do we have a kind of a moving schedule here?
Yes, so substantial completion for the project phase one is, I believe.
In November.
Mid-November. And so the finance department is planning to move in early December.
Are we planning some type of open house?
We have not planned an open house, but we certainly can do that. The, I think the open house will be when everybody comes in to pay their property taxes.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
And between when they've moved in and settled in, then it'll be Christmas. So maybe we could have some kind of welcome for people coming in to, to pay their property taxes.
You have another question, Ken?
I have another question. It's on page three, top item. The forester is not here. My question is, are there any DNR funds for the future? We got eighteen, what, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to work on twenty trees, let's see, twenty trees and forty trees as far as ash trees. So is anything coming up for any future funding? I asked in a meeting, this is a short time ago, how many public trees are there? And I think somebody, I think Luke said about two hundred. Okay, the number of private trees is much more as far as ash trees. So just doing twenty and forty isn't doing very much. So I'm asking whether any funding is coming up in the future as far from DNR? And if not, how are all these people going to take care of all this removal of trees?
I'm not aware of any additional funding that was, that has been made available by the DNR. I know that if there is any other grants that are offered, we will certainly be applying for them. And, and as to how the public will pay for the cost of removal of the trees, there's not an easy answer to that question.
Well, I think there's going to be a way, if it progresses as, as it's got to progress, there'll be a lot of dead trees. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the annual goals? Are these po, these are posted on the, uh, website, right?
Uh, they are in the packet, I'm not sure if they're posted separately on the website. We can look back and see if that's something that we've done previously.
Okay, otherwise we'll do that. Right, well, I believe that ends the, the information and discussion items. Uh, we do have a closed session scheduled and we do plan to reconvene an open session. Um, I am going to suggest that the council for the closed session will move downstairs and allow the people who are in the chamber here to remain and, uh, we'll move down to the finance department office. So I would need a motion to go into closed section, session, per Wisconsin statute nineteen-eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is, uh, in relation to the city manager.
I would so move, as stated.
Motion by Ken, second by Barb, uh, we'll vote. Kalian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we will, uh, we will go downstairs for our meeting. Everybody is welcome to stay here and eat as many cookies as you can find, especially since there are none. Okay, I believe we're all back, uh, and so I would reconvene, uh, the council in open session. I don't think we need a motion to do that, I think we just do that. Is that correct, Ms. Protem? We don't have to have a motion?
Actually, I believe it says reconvene in open session.
So we don't have to have a motion?
Uh, I don't believe the motion said we were coming back.
Yes, I do believe you.
Okay, but the motion said.
Do you need to have a motion to come back to open session?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll have a motion to come back to open session.
I so move.
Who was that?
Me, Barbara Stockton.
Barb?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion.
I'm sorry, I missed your.
We're moving to move into open session.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to move into open session, Barb and Robin, we'll vote. Kalian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. And now we have action on our closed session. Do I have a motion?
I would move to, uh, approve the employment agreement with Adam Rukel, uh, as presented in the agreement. And the starting date will be, um, January sixth of twenty-twenty.
Right, so that.
We have a motion and a second to approve an employment agreement with Adam Rukel effective January sixth, twenty-twenty. We'll vote. Kalian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have one more motion I need tonight.
Should I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second, we'll vote. Kalian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, any feel?